Fair point. Otherwise, we're good. All right, it is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for Monday, November thirteenth. Please rise for pledge of allegiance. Council, first item on our agenda tonight is agenda review and adoption. Look for a motion.
I will move.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next up is special presentations for swearing in of a new officer. Chief.
As long as you can see that. Raise your right hand for me, Logan. I, Logan Act.
I, Logan Act.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the city of Sartell.
And the ordinances of the city of Sartell.
That I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
That I will faithfully, justly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
Discharge the duties of a police officer.
For the city of Sartell.
For the city of Sartell.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I was gonna say, just go deep.
Uh, do you want anyone?
And then the rest.
Yeah, right.
Whoever's from PD staff.
Ladies' favorite.
Can we get some people on this side? Okay. And then.
And you, uh. Logan has a distinct, uh, honor of being like hired at the same time I was, so we've been through a little journey together. And if you wanna recognize the family, you know, grandparents, parents, Logan's gonna go through a lot, and I said that in the hallway, but I meant that he's gonna see some, and have to do some really hard things. They're gonna change him as a human and as he grows as a police officer, but we promise to take care of him and we know you guys are back too. Appreciate you here today, so thank you.
Let's show some pictures.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, excuse me, is open forum, and we have one registered tonight. Uh, we have Peter Wilson. Wouldn't mind stepping forward, stating your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Peter Wilson, Sartell, Minnesota. I wanna speak on a couple things. One is gonna be the, the yard sign, political yard signs. Um, when our state, along with many other states, made the decision to make a politically motivated event out of a hoax of a health event and changed the election's process in the number of days, one of the things that didn't change was the window of time to have up yard signs. Right now, my understanding, and I've checked into it and was graciously contacted back by the city, um, is, you know, from a primary is forty-six days roughly. Since the elections, oftentimes, and some of these cases start earlier, I may be wrong in this case, but then again, you're looking at putting a yard sign out for someone where they're voting the very next day. Uh, that seems to be not a lot of campaigning. So my request is you reach out to our illustrious folks down in the cities and ask them why this was not changed. I don't know that, that does not appear to be following the swearing in of our recent gentleman of the, following the Constitution of the United States. I don't see where they have that authority, but on the other hand, they are operating with it. Um, again, I wanna call out the, uh, local police. They are the main, um, they are the foundation of our nation, not just in what they do or how effectively they do it, but they are one of the major reasons that we are different than most other countries in that we don't have a national police force, although we appear to be getting one to an increasing degree. Um, the other part of this I wanna talk about, um, right now in Wisconsin, people are screaming they don't wanna be like St. Cloud or the Minneapolis area with the refugee resettlement mess. Again, I have no issue with refugees. My wife came over as an adult female. It's the way that the system works and has been set up. So, um, in there, right now, their information is being pulled up for who signed what and who didn't sign and whether there was legal authority. I don't know where that will go, but I'm just making the comments that all these programs from green steps to the refugee resettlement deal to the welcoming cities, there are people who track it and look at it, and I think you need to spend more time as a city looking into why these things come about, who administers them, who promotes them, who funds this, and why. Again, much of it is having to do with the United Nations, and I think any quick evaluation of that would determine it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, next on our agenda is the approval of city council minutes from October twenty-third regular meeting. I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, we have consent agenda. We have items A through F. Is there a motion to, uh, carry all of them, or is there one that won't, wants to be polled?
I'll make a motion to approve A through F.
Have a motion to approve A through F.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry. Uh, onto old business. Uh, old business, we have zoning appeal.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. The item on old business is our zoning appeal. Um, there's some pictures that you can just bring up, thank you. This was previously discussed at a council workshop on October ninth of twenty twenty-three. Some background on this, city staff have been working with the property owners on a possible resolution of the proposed fence zoning violation since June of this year. We sent out, but, uh, zoning violation letters, held in-person meetings with the property owners, had multiple phone calls regarding the fence violation as well. Property owners then came to an open forum, um, meeting in October to discuss a zoning violation. Council then directed the property owners to work with staff. Resulting from that, property owners did not work with staff after that conversation from council and direction from council, and then staff initiated the court process to come to a resolution on this violation as we normally proceed. We discussed, um, at the council workshop how to proceed with the violation due to not working with staff and/or responding to staff. An option of, in our zoning ordinances is to file an appeal with the zoning administrator, who is myself. Um, according to our ordinance, property owner of their, or their agent shall file with the zoning administrator an application for appeal stating the specific grounds upon which the appeal is made. The city's attorney presented this appeal procedure to the property owners in person, meeting on their property, and gave them till October twentieth to submit the appeal. The property owner submitted this formal appeal notice, which is included in your packets, on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, on the grounds of appealing the fence definition within our zoning ordinance and clarifying that the proposed violation is an art trellis and not a fence. If the council approves this appeal, the zoning violation would be resolved. If it becomes a nuisance that you see on the pictures there, staff would follow the proper policies and procedures outlined within our ordinances of addressing the nuisance. This zoning appeal was brought to planning commission this past week, and it was denied five to zero on November sixth, twenty twenty-three. If the council does not approve this appeal, staff would work with the city attorney to officially file the documents drafted with Stearns County. Ultimately, the court would have the final determination of this zoning appeal if council tonight chooses not to approve this appeal as presented. Planning commission's comments, um, they just wanted to highlight some of the information on the petition that was included, just highlighting that some of the signatures within the petition were not surrounding neighbors or neighborhood. And then they also highlighted that we should follow our standard process, which we did. We provided notices, those are in the packet. We also had our attorney draft a notice to them as well. Planning commission also highlighted that this property owners are making this decision to continue, um, with their art trellis or fence according to our zoning ordinance, and that the property owners could actually construct an actual trellis, meeting building code requirements as well, meaning they'd actually have to apply for a building permit to make sure it's structurally sound and anchored, and then that staff has, have exhausted all resources at this point other than having the court determine a ruling on this. Um, once again, when we discuss at our council workshop, we did talk about how the property owners changed their, changed their opinion or mind multiple times of what the structure actually was. It started as a sound barrier against Pine Cone Road, then it became a wedding backdrop, then ultimately a fence, and what was submitted within the letter and petition is that it's a trellis. So, staff recommends denial of the appeal due, due to meeting the definition of a fence in our zoning ordinance. That definition is within your packet as well. Buyer ordinance staff cannot recommend approval, but city council may override the zoning administrator's determination and planning councils, planning commission's determination. So our request this evening would be a motion in second to deny the zoning appeal. There are a few other pictures that I have included. If you just want to go to the next one, I think there's a total of four. They're in your packet as well. With that, I would take any questions that you may have regarding the zoning appeal.
Council, what questions do we have?
How is this constructed and held together? Some of it looks like just stacked wood throughout the middle of it, but just curious. I have never seen it, but.
Yes, um, it is just constructed of stacked wood and braced wood. It, it appears to be as maybe some areas are faltering, more wood is braced against it. There's, nothing's fastened or anchored to the ground at all.
Carrie, you mentioned that if we were to, um, approve the appeal, that would carry unless there was, there was a nuisance identified. Can you give us an example of, of what would be considered a nuisance? Is that defined?
Yes, that's, um, defined as well in the notice of violation. That's included in the packet. Um, this is considered a nuisance for us in also going forward if we would approve this. Um, if it would continue to endanger the public safety, health, or welfare, um, so if it's not structurally sound in the wall or the fences, in disrepair falling and poses a safety risk to people walking, um, on this path nearby, that would be a nuisance, or whether it attracts, um, wild animals in the area, um, essentially that would be stemming from neighbor complaints as well. If we get issues of rodents and other nature items like that, and that would be a nuisance as well. But primarily from a safety standpoint, that is a nuisance in our eyes. Um, so if that would continue to falter, we would look at it as a nuisance.
Okay, thank you. And I think I read too that there's a recommendation from the attorney to put private property signs up, and that was completed?
They have since put, um, private property signs up just to ensure that, um, people are not going through what appears to be little walkways through the property. So they have said they would install them, and they did.
Thank you.
Carrie, um, there was a number of signatures on the petition in support of it. Um, immediate neighbors and, and, and so, I would guess the neighborhood area? And we verified that?
Yeah, I went through it again today, and I verified and highlighted, um, and I can show you guys that it is the immediate properties, um, on the first initial page of the petition, if you look in your packet. The first few are immediate property, um, neighbors. Otherwise, some go into surrounding neighborhoods, but the immediate neighbors did sign on.
Carrie, is there a walking path right behind that, that we have concern of it falling on at all, or?
If, if this would continue to get larger and those braces of the wood being braced against what's existing there, it could be, because some are in excess of ten, twelve feet. Um, but right now, as long as people stay off the property, I think it'd be fine.
Maybe a follow-up to that. Um, at that point, could we, we could deem that a nuisance?
Yes.
Safety hazard?
Yes, and then we'd follow our nuisance ordinance as well, similar to our zoning, um, violations with first initial notices and then eventual attorney discussions as well, if it gets to that point.
Council, any other questions? Seeing none, would look for a motion.
I guess, um, before I make a motion, I have one thing I'd like to, um, if we, if we were to pass it, um, I would like the, uh, a note made on there that if any adjacent property has an issue with it, that, um, it'd be considered a nuisance or however you'd like to define that. Um, we walk that fine line between artwork, fence, and what it actually is. Um, so we obviously have resources in the city. I'm gonna need to decide best how to use those. Um, but, um, myself as a property owner, if I moved in next door, um, I think they have a, um, right to determine if, um, it can affect, if there's people walking through, um, they're obviously affected by that. Um, so I would be okay with moving forward, but under the, the, like I mentioned about having adjacent neighborhoods and, um, just watch closely under that nuisance, 'cause, um, I think there's that potential that could get out of hand. Um, and I wanna make sure that, um, we have, um, action that we can take.
I, I do have to provide notice to the property owners of the determination of the appeal tonight, and so I can articulate that in the response to them, that if this poses a nuisance in the future with this surround, uh, the neighbors, then we could go down the route of our nuisance per ordinance.
Does that satisfy your intent on that?
Yes.
Um, can you phrase that into a motion?
Um, I will make a motion to, well, let me see this again. Sorry, I have to go back to the right page. So it was brought forward to us to deny it, correct?
Correct.
So I really wouldn't be, would I be approving then, Anna? Right?
Approving the appeal?
Yes.
Yeah, approving the appeal, correct.
I will make a motion to approve the appeal under the stipulation that, um, if a adjacent neighbor to the property, um, brings forward a nuisance or, um, an issue with it, that it would be denied at that time?
It would follow our nuisance ordinance.
Okay. Um, just before I ask for a second, any clarification needed on the motion?
Well, I just, I, adjacent, does that mean immediate neighbors, or are you talking?
Yeah, I would, um, how I see it, and I'm open to discussion on it, um, would be those directly adjacent.
So the abutting properties?
Yeah.
Now it'd just be two? It'd be a two, yeah.
The north and south side neighbor, okay. So adjustment to the motion that it's abutting property owners?
Correct.
Um, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, discussion. So for clarification, what's, uh, being, what's been motioned in a second in is to approve the appeal so long as there is not a, um, a general nuisance that arises and/or a nuisance brought forward by one of the, uh, abutting neighbors or properties. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Onto public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on the vacation of Wyoming court.
The vacation for Wyoming court was reviewed by the planning commission, which recommended approval of the vacation on November sixth, twenty twenty-three. As you can see there, outlined is, there is a middle vacant lot between two properties where the vacation is at. Um, the applicant has requested to vacate the drainage and utility easements between those lots to allow the lot lines to be adjusted. Can you go to the next page, please? As you can see here and in front of you, I placed the certificate of survey. The applicant submitted also an administrative subdivision combination application, which was approved by staff. The purpose of these requests is to split the middle vacant lot that you can see there and combine with the abutting lots, which creates larger single-family lots. After the current drainage and utility easements are vacated, the applicant has provided the necessary documents to replace the easements for all properties that were affected by this vacation request. Pretty straightforward. They have, um, completed all their paperwork for the lot line adjustments, and they are working on getting their deeds drafted, signed, and recorded, which reflect this lot line adjustment and vacation request. With that, I would take any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions for staff? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the vacation of Wyoming court, please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Peter J. Wilson, eleven zero eight Celebration Drive, Sartell, Minnesota, five six three seven seven. I don't know whether this is good or bad, or appropriate or inappropriate. I question the constitutional authority of an un-elected group to take any action at any level, and especially anything to do with the planning commissions or organizations or anything. I don't consider they have any authority. I consider they were initially established in their formative years, uh, when they became more powerful from the elitist and the communist in the Chicago area. The history of that is quite easily found, uh, and the res, the structure they, they inhabited at thirteen thirteen East Sixtieth Street. So I think, um, again, I just look at this, that whether it's right or wrong, or good or bad, or someone becomes a millionaire, a billionaire, or a thousand little kids are saved, I don't know that that is legal. I've been to small towns.
And, and I apologize, I'll have to stop you. The item before us tonight is the vacation of an easement, and we do need to stick to topic on that.
Very good. Then I think my topic is, they don't have the authority one way or another to do it. I don't care whether it's good or bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the vacation of easements for Wyoming court? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the vacation of easements for Wyoming court? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council, any questions for staff on the vacation request?
None for me.
Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, prior to the next item, I will be stepping down to eliminate any potential conflict of interest for the next item, and we'll hand it over to acting mayor, uh, council member, Elmas.
Carrie, would like to introduce the next agenda item, please.
Acting mayor and members of the council, before you is a conditional use permit submitted by Enterprise Energy LLC. The, what is being proposed is a construction and operation of, up to a two-megawatt solar garden within an R-one residential district. The applicant applied for this conditional use permit to allow this construction of the solar garden with the new recent solar ordinance that was approved by council on October twenty, twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. This allows solar gardens in any zoning district with an approved interim use permit. This conditional use permit was only able to be reviewed for approval on May second after annexation. However, we did have a solar garden moratorium in place for that solar garden and solar ordinance. Once that was approved, then we could review the permit which was submitted. This permit has since been modified to reflect what the current ordinance requires for the solar garden developments, including the duration of the permit not to exceed thirty-five years. I just wanna point out the discrepancy I have in the memo. It states in writing thirty-five years, but the number says twenty-five. So I just wanna point that out, that it is thirty-five years, which meets the intent of the interim use permit. This conditional use permit establishes findings of fact that I will go through individually, which is required as part of the conditional use permit approval. And I'll just highlight some of the other conditions that I'll go through as well after the findings. The permit is subject to subdivision regulations and site plan approval processes, adherence to the recent solar ordinance meeting screening requirements, compliance with fire and/or landscape maintenance agreements if required. This is requested and completed during site plan approval process, meet solar site management requirements, provide a de-commissioning plan with financial assurance established in a mount defined by the city, and I'll get into that later. An amount defined by the city, and I'll get into that later, duration of the permit not to exceed thirty-five years, which I stated. There is some um, conditions on revocation, continued use and time limit. Conditions included as well in your packet and within the resolution. There are setback requirements with the new sole ordinance that was approved, and that's on your screen there. Meet the specific building setback requirements for the zoning district, which is thirty front, ten side, thirty rear. For R one single family residential, they have provided thirty side and front and a hundred foot. Setback along the south property line. Two hundred feet setback from existing structures, as you can see he, see here, this far exceeds that. Quarter mile setback from minor principal arterial roadways, proposed solar garden is a quarter mile from Pine Cone Road. Hundred setback from all other public roadways, trails and or sidewalks. They have included a hundred foot setback from the south property line for a future Fifteenth Street North in that alignment um, as well. And it's also exceeds the, the setback requirement from Seventeenth Street North. It also needs to be two hundred feet setback from public parks, this exceeds that requirement from Pine Cone Central Park, as indicated there. Um, I will now go through some of the findings of fact, and I just wanna highlight that I will go through these findings of fact. If you have questions, please articulate them and write them down, and I'll answer them after the public hearing. So A, findings of fact, and I printed off each of a resolution for each of you and place it in front of you. So the permit will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property owners in the immediate vicinity. Will not substantially dis- diminish, diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity. And it is compatible with the existing neighborhood because the property will be used in a way that ensures restoration of the site to its pre-developed conditions. Once the permit has expired, and or if the conditions are not met, financial guaranteed, it is required as part of this condition of the permit. Ensuring that there are monetary funds to accomplish this requirement. Within your packet, I also included the submitted decommissioning plan, now go over that in more detail with the conditions. B, it goes into that it will not impede the orderly development and or improvement of the surrounding vacant properties. For uses predominant in the area. This solar garden, a solar garden is listed as interim use permit within the R one single family residential zone properties. It also allows the property to be utilized as proposed this evening with up to two megawatt solar garden. And upon expiration of the permit, or if the conditions are not met, the property may be developed at a time when the surrounding properties are developed. C, that it states that adequate utilities, public and private access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been provided. They have provided entrance to the site, which is subject to fire marshal approval. They have included an access road within a dedicated easement, access is off of Seventeenth Street North. If you wanna go to the next one, Rob, I think it's the site plan. No, okay, that's fine, you can go back to the other one. The first page, thank you. That adequate measures have been or will, or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking to ser- serve the proposed use. This proposed use doesn't generate the need for off-street parking. If you go to slide three and four, Rob, please. Um, adequate measures have been taken or will be taken to prevent the control of offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise or vibration. They submitted a glare study and a landscaping plan, which is part of the requirement. There you can see what they have proposed for the landscaping, which includes a staggered double row, one row of balsam fir. And another row of dogwoods. Um, soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use, generally this is submitted during site and plat review. With grading and drainage plan review as well. G, proper facilities have been provided, which would eliminate any traffic congestion, that's pretty self-explanatory for this proposed use. Um, there wouldn't be traffic congestion created from this, um, and that during construction, it will all be contained within the property. H, goes into demonstrated needs exist for the proposed use, we have um, within our ordinance, we have established that. There is a need or desire for solar gardens, and we realize that within our ordinance, we have included up to ten megawatts within the. City limits, we have three right now, with this proposed up to two megawatts, we'd be to five out of the ten. I, that the proposed use is following the future land use adopted by the city, this proposed use is on. R one single family residential, which follows our future land use as well, and solar gardens are listed as an interim use. We also define a date for expiration of the permit, which meets the intent of the solar ordinance, like I stated, thirty-five years. Now to go into the conditions, A, that they're subject to plating and site plan approval process. B, that they have to adhere to the new solar garden ordinance. C, that they need to submit screening requirements and meet, be met to the satisfaction of the city. They did submit a plan, and it is included in your packet. Like I stated earlier, fire or landscaping maintenance agreements are required, applicant shall comply with this requirement. And that'll be reviewed during site plan approval process as normal. E, the applicant shall meet the solar site management requirements, they submitted that plan, and it is included in your packet. F, the decommissioning plan shall be submitted to ensure that facilities are properly removed after the useful life of the solar panels. And our other facilities, or upon expiration of the permit. Within that, a bond letter of credit, escrow, other financial security in a form and amount set by the city is required. Within that, they submitted offering a hundred thousand bond for decommissioning. For the financial security that we could handle the decommissioning if needed. However, if you go further into the decommissioning plan. The amount identified is three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and ninety cents to decommission the site. Listed with a ten percent con- contingency, which was submitted by the applicant. And I'll go into that at later to define other, other surrounding areas if requested by you. To see how um, that is in comparison to surrounding areas and how to get to that. Um, closer to what is actually quoted to do the decommissioning. G, duration of the permit not to exceed thirty-five years, revocation. That the city council may revoke this permit if the conditions of the permit are no longer being complied with. I, continued use, that subsequent occupants under the same terms can continue this use as approved. Time limit, that the conditional use permit upon written notice being provided to the city. To the permitting, but without further action by the planning commission or city council, shall expire if the permit holder fails to initiate such permit. And fulfill each and every condition that I have went through, from two years of the date of authorization. Or if there's a discontinued use within that twelve month period, which would initiate the decommissioning plan and requirements. As outlined within our ordinance. With that, I, I would go through that, planning commission had some comments um, regarding the consistency. Of what we require for financial assurance. Um, that they did compare it to how we have development agreements and set those amounts general. We set those amounts at a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of improvements, and that they'd like to see some consistency. Between solar garden developments going forward. And they also wanted to highlight that they had some concerns with what is, what is it going to be worth? Because it is referenced within the decommissioning plan that a lot of these materials would be able to be recycled and sold. So they're a little leery on what is it going to be worth in twenty-five to thirty-five years, once this permit. Um, is no longer valid, or the useful life of the property. With that, I would go into opening the public hearing, and then I can follow up with any questions that may result from the public hearing. Or that you may have from my discussion.
Excellent, thank you, Carrie. Uh, with that, I would like to uh, open up the public hearing um, for the solar garden. And the enterprise energy, um, if you'd like to come up and testify, I would like you to state your name, your address. And try and please stay on the topic of the enterprise energy solar garden. With that, I will open up the public comment. Please, if you'd like to s- talk about it, please step forward, state your name, your address.
My name is Nick Bromchankel, my address is Sock Rapids, but my family owns a property just west of that. And I would just like to be known that we do not want the solar garden in there, we would like to develop that later. Um, with this being there for thirty-five years, that kinda just dismantles that whole idea. So, we just wanted to let that known, that we would not like to see this approved.
Thank you. Anybody willing to testify on the topic, please step forward.
Good evening, Peter Wilson again. In the, in the early nineties, I was working for a major corporation that was involved in the Arrowhead refinery debacle. In Duluth, there was a matter of, over twenty years after the inception of all of that. Uh, people became accountable or responsible businesses, individuals who were retired, assets were seized. And every other imaginably ridiculous thing. I was involved with a number of businesses we had dealt with in the past, who were involved in that cleanup debacle. I saw a piece of paper this big used to justify a two hundred thousand dollar obligation, and it didn't even indicate. Much of, I think it was three dollars or two dollars and thirty cents, so my concern is um. Not, again, I think it's not that whether you can do this or should do this, it should, or pardon me, it should be whether you should. I have the feeling that if everything goes bad, or turns out less than desirable, a hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand. Is a rather nominal amount, and the consequences from whatever may arise from all of these chemicals. And different things that are in these panels, and the impact to our country and to the local community. Far, will potentially far exceed those um, amounts of money, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel, my name is Nathan Dull, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Minnesota Land and Liberty Coalition. Uh, the Land and Liberty Coalition is a statewide nonprofit group made up of farmers, landowners, taxpayers, ratepayers. Business and community leaders and proponents of an all the above energy future right here in Minnesota. Uh, we're united by our support for protecting private property rights, allowing landowners and farmers to invest in their land the way they see fit. As we do believe it is a kitchen table issue, also enhancing our grid reliability as energy security is national security. And these sorts of projects do allow us to revitalize communities and invest economically. Um, so I'd just like to stand here tonight and express our support for this project. I've had the privilege of encountering Mr. Carlson, the applicant throughout Minnesota um, in the past few years. And he is a great neighbor as far as a developer, so you can be rest assured that. He will be a, a living person, um, and maintain the residence and be a good neighbor, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Janelle Peterson, which my maiden name is Wire. Uh, my dad's land adjoins Ryan's, and my grandpa's. Land is across the road from there, which is for sale, and had been offered to get solar panels in there too. Um, there's, I don't know who benefits off the solar energy, do we all get a tax break because of the solar panels that are gonna be up? You know, um, I know it's gonna wreck the wildlife back there. I don't, I would like to know how the people in Sartell are gonna benefit off that solar panel. We've got them north of Sartell, two of them. I, who, who gets it, who gets the money, who's, who's making the money off these solar panels? You know, I mean, we deer hunt back here and I love it, you know, and we've got Baker's Lake back there, we've got geese and everything. And now we got solar panels right here, it doesn't fit the atmosphere, I know there's, we got a progress. And now we're gonna have Fifteenth Street that's gonna go flying through past my dad's property too. You know, I don't wanna look at solar panels back there, I grew up here, I've been here my whole life, and now I have to look at that. And now when my dad passes away, what am I gonna, how is my land gonna be worth anything? Is it gonna depreciate because of these solar panels, I mean, I don't agree with my aunts and uncles selling this property, the property. And it's not sold yet, and this guy doesn't have the money to, to get it going yet. But it's, it's just sad seeing, I don't know if this, is the city just um. It's like you pay taxes your whole life for this land and your farmland, and then all of a sudden, oh, the city comes in and. They're telling us, oh yeah, it's, you're giving us okay to have this solar panel, but we're not in the city, we're still Lee Sock Township. So I don't understand how this can keep, I mean, they don't ask, they just do, you know? So I like to say, where, who's benefiting off these solar panels? Is it, is our, my electric bill gonna go down now because of it, is my dad's because he adjoins the land? Where is it going, and we have so much cloudy weather in the state of Minnesota, how do we benefit off a solar panel? I mean, six months out of the year, I mean, especially right now, we don't get much sunshine, so they can't be producing much energy. You know, and so after thirty-five years, let's say these solar panels are done. What do you do with this stuff, they say it's recyclable, and the next person says they're not recyclable, now is the land any good, now we wipe that all out. These solar panels, is the land good now, can we farm it again, can we build on it, did it contaminate it because of that? I mean, I don't know, there's just lots of questions, you know? I mean, personally, I think the land would be worth more, I mean, my dad's been getting letters in the mail every other week for solar panels. You know, and dad just says it's up to you kids to decide what you wanna do, you know? It's, it's tough, there's not enough knowledge out there to explain to us. I guess my biggest, who's benefiting off this, and is CenturyLink making money off it, the power companies are local? I mean, where is it going, you know? Are these people, I, I don't know if these people get the money to do this stuff, so, it's just my thoughts. Like I say, there's a lot of wildlife back there, I hate to see it, solar panels up there.
Thank you, thank you, just to clarify, the council and staff are not able to respond to questions, but we'll be discussing it after we close the public hearing, so. Anyone else willing to testify? Can we just go for the first round, and then we'll bring in a. Second call for people wanna testify in regards to this?
Hi, Evan Carlson, Enterprise Energy, I'm the developer here, and um. Well, I've been coming here a while now, um, I acquired this site, uh, a lease on it over a year ago. And um, at that time, there was a different ordinance in place, and I acquired the site. Uh, with the understanding that I'd be applying under that ordinance, um, but it wasn't um. Wasn't an arbitrary selection, when I, when I looked for a property, I looked at the city, I looked at the utility map, I looked at the power lines. And I asked myself, what is the part of the city that is the best place to do solar development? And uh, factories I consider are not only the ability to interconnect into the electrical grid, which is. Absolutely important, but also, uh, what is outside of the city's uh, growth area? What areas are unlikely to be uh, developed in the future? And what areas are farthest away from other land uses that could uh, object to a solar installation? And uh, this area is the farthest area away from other users that I could identify within the city limits. And also was uh, developable, so that's why I reached out to a few property owners in this area. And, and I am the buyer under that purchase agreement, and I've been working with your agent, so I will also be a neighbor to this property. Um, we can talk about that after, but um. Yeah, I mean, it's uh, it's, it's the best site within the city, the city has a cap on how many projects can go in. Um, the uh, reason why it's the best is because it's least visible to other areas. And because uh, we annexed into the city uh, for the purpose of solar development, so but for us annexing in. So but for us annexing in, uh, there would be no tax revenue to the city. So by annexing in, by changing the land use, by, uh, uh, potentially paying production tax and other types of taxes, that's free money. There's no added upgrade infrastructure. We don't have students that are attend- attending your schools. We don't ask for roads. We don't ask for, uh, anything. Uh, we just want the right to build it and, and to pay those taxes. So that's what's in it for the city. And there's no capital cost to getting us to do it. And what's really, again, unique about solar is that it's temporary. So we go there, we're there for thirty-five years, and then we, uh, remove the installation, and, um, it can be developed for some other use in the future. Um, it's not a very complex installation in the first place. It's, uh, a bunch of I-beams that are hammered into the ground, and then there's a racking system on that. There's, solar panels are screwed into the racking system. But the most, uh, environmental impact is the access road itself and the, uh, water retention ponds that are by the roughly two-hundred-foot, uh, equipment pads that house our metering equipment and things like that. So, uh, i- it's not that sophisticated of a development. It's not like there's a bunch of poor concrete all over the place. Um, another one of the benefits of that type of development is that in this case, there are wetlands on the south end of that parcel that could not be developed into another use. You know, you can't put houses in wetlands. In fact, a lot of the time, you can't put solar panels in them, but these wetlands are farmed. So they're not providing that environmental benefit that they normally would as, i- they're just hydroic soils at this point, right? They're not, they're not actually wetlands. They're just hydroic. But when we go in there, we plant the whole thing in this in- indigenous pollinator-friendly seed mix. We'll, we'll actually restore those wetlands to wetlands, and then they're permanently wetlands then. So there is a kind of a, an environmental spin on this thing that not all of the solar developments actually have. It's a little plus-one for this project as opposed to others, which I'm really proud of. Um, I, I'm really proud of that, uh, additional benefit that you don't always see. And, um, you know, as I, as I told you before, I'm a small business owner. I, I started this business, uh, right around the time I leased this parcel. And, uh, as a small business owner, all of my projects are very important to my company. Uh, I don't do as much volume. Um, I pick them very carefully because, uh, frankly, I can't afford to lose. Uh, you know, I wa- I wanna make sure I'm picking winners. And, and that's why I go out of my way to make sure I'm getting sites that are not visible like this, and have some sort of a, a winning story like that. And, um, frankly, I'm so confident in, in, in it that I've, uh, you know, I'm willing to buy adjoining land. Um, so the property was just annexed in. That's me, um, hopefully be the neighbor here, so, um, uh, I'll hopefully bring that neighbor's perspective. I'll give the land to my son, and, um, I, I'm looking forward to that as well, but i- that's really not relevant to this project. But since there was some mystery around it, I wanted to just be transparent about it. Um, so, I submitted this a year ago. It, uh, it complied with the old ordinance, but the new ordinance, you, and you're all familiar with that, the really, uh, important parts that were changed were the addition, well, from my perspective, are the addition of the vegetation management plan and the addition of the decommissioning plan. Those are two things that I don't, uh, prepare myself. It requires expertise in both of those areas. So we hire a third party to prepare them for us. Um, uh, Natural Resources Services is another Minnesota company, our fully, that we've used before on a lot of these projects. It's a small world, and all this solar people bump into each other quite a bit. But I have a lot of faith in their ability to do this. I don't, uh, influence their decision. I ask them to make the best plan they can, which in this case involves, uh, additional vegetative screening, um, around the perimeter where there isn't, uh, already. Uh, the decommissioning plan, uh, you know, th- this is a, it's a real decommissioning plan. I didn't put my thumb on the scale when generating these numbers. I came out with figures that are accurate and generally accepted, uh, in the industry. If you, I, I'm sure staff has compared this. They, they shopped it around to some other areas. Uh, uh, Stearns County, uh, has one of the most restrictive decommissioning requirements. And, uh, they, this is something that they would have seen, uh, and couldn't vouch for its familiarity of just that, uh, it, they're not, they're not made up numbers. Um, but, uh, decommissioning is essentially just building it backwards. You know, we go in there, we unscrew the solar panels, we, uh, put them on a truck, we get them out of there. They can be recycled, but practically speaking, once they're off of the site, they're no longer the city's problem. They will be removed from the site. Then there's the equipment. Uh, there's steel racking and I-beams that are pounded into the ground and wiring. That all is rec- recyclable at, at a profit. Um, there's some question about, you know, what is that now versus what is it in the future? Um, solar panels become less valuable over time, but recycle, recyclable metals should stay roughly in the same area, keep up with inflation or so, and have roughly the same, uh, recyclable value in the future, uh, assuming, you know, nothing else has changed relating to that. So, um, uh, with that, um, you know, I, I'd like to answer questions. I, I guess there isn't a real interactive experience here, but, um, you know, I, I would like to know, um, what questions and concerns. But hopefully, the process of going through this, uh, ordinance amendment and coming out the other side of it clean, uh, because the, the site was just very carefully selected. And the project has been given the utmost care by the owner of the company from the start till now. So, um, that's something that we'll continue to do, and, uh, it will con- get, continue to get my attention, uh, throughout the process. I know there's more work, if it were approved, that needs to be done with staff to get the platting process and all those things completed, but, uh, I'm looking forward to cooperating on all that too. So, um, you know, i- in, in, in essence, you know, the thesis of my, my applicant, my, my whole, uh, solar pitch is that it's, it's free money. I mean, you don't have to pay for anything. And it pays taxes that otherwise wouldn't get paid to the city during its life. And that's why, uh, it's a good use for the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else willing to testify? Please step forward for your first?
Doug Ferns, Sartell, Minnesota. I guess, uh, one of the words I hate in this country is free. Because I'll tell you what, there's nobody that even freedom's not free. As people that serve in, in the special forces, any forces, and police and all that, there is no such thing as free. So I think Mr. Carlson's a little delusional on that. The other thing that I, I find very strange, I, I would want anyone in, in the community to scour the hundred-and-sixty-some pages that I've gone through in the last few months of all of your emails and your, your texts and anything else that are, are, are for public knowledge, to really look through this project. Because there's a lot of things here that just, they don't pass the smell test as far as I'm concerned. We've got a mayor, and if I'm not mistaken, there's only one project in this town right now that's asking for this. One project. But the last meeting I was at, we were specifically told not to address a single project when we were talking about solar. But that's the whole reason we're all here right now, because of one project that our mayor is doing on a piece of property that he owns. I, 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 I find that a big conflict of interest, and I find it a conflict of interest that all you on the city council didn't address Mr. Fitzsim voting on the solar memorandum. Whether or not it directly affected his property, he's the only one on the docket that it affects. But yet, he didn't reclusive himself from that. I find that strange. So you guys should have a little meeting and maybe discuss that a little bit. You're under the gun for a lot of things. The one thing, this is the last time I wanna come here and talk about this, 'cause you guys, I think, already have your minds made up. You did on the solar memorandum, 'cause I looked at the numbers on that. Sixty-seven percent of the people on that survey decided that for future, um, primary roads, you shouldn't allow sou- allow, allow the solar to go through. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Fitzsim's property runs right on that, but yet he's gonna be a hundred feet away from a future primary road. But that wasn't considered. Why did you guys waste the money? The other thing I went back and looked at during that meeting that made me upset, I posed the question if any of you guys were a part of that survey prior. And I heard Nikki Schweder saying that, that you guys all saw the survey before and had a part of it, and then I listened to Mr. Fitzsim say right up there that he didn't have anything to do with it. That bothers me, 'cause one thing that really makes me angry is lying. That upsets me big time. You can say something I don't like and we can disagree. That's great. This country needs to start doing that and finding middle ground. But there's too many things that, that I don't like. One of the questions I'd like answered is, does the credit union have anything to do with either Mr. Fitzsim or Mr. Carlson or this project? Because that's a special interest. And if he's doing business with you, if I'm doing business with any of you and I'm standing up here and I want something, boy, we better separate this deal. Okay? 'Cause there's a lot of things I'm seeing through this hundred-and-sixty pages, and I, I really challenge anybody that's watching or in our community to, to come in and ask for those and read through them. Or if they wanna know some of the things that I found in there, I'd be more than happy to share. 'Cause I don't like coming here, and I don't like this, and I commend all of you for what you do, 'cause I don't wanna do it. But what I don't like is when somebody's making money off of something that's supposed to be for the better of the community. The question that was posed tonight, how much do solar, I own land in S- in Sartell, I own land in St. Cloud, I own land throughout the state. Solar poses, in answer to your question, fifteen-hundred an acre on the low end. And if I'm not mistaken, I saw in some of your notes that Mr. Carlson's up to twenty-two-hundred to twenty-five-hundred dollars an acre. So who profits? The owner. That's who profits. Money and power, that's just kinda where it goes. And I got nothing wrong against any of that, but don't do it hiding behind a public office. And don't scratch each other's backs, 'cause you're buddies, or maybe you've got a business that you're kinda scared that something gets blended into, and boy, you want that vote when the time comes. Uh, one of the things I noticed today, three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand for decommission. I did a development back in the nineties here in this town. Last I knew, it was a hundred-and-twenty-five percent you need to bond for. But boy, they talk about all these things, you're gonna decommission and all that, and I just found out from somebody that's been fifteen years in sanitation that right now, we have nothing in this, in this country to, to get rid of these solar panels. Nothing. Hopefully the staff or somebody checked on that. Where are we gonna go with it? Mr. Carlson goes bankrupt, because if any of you remember Signature Homes, boy, we had a lot of lots in this town from them. A lot of them to get rid of, and anybody else that goes under. So three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand to destroy this, i- if it goes under, and he can't do it. I question, number one, if that's my land, that should probably be in my name. I should be the one that should get the bond for it, and it should be for a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. 'Cause let me tell you, a hundred grand doesn't go very far nowadays. It's a joke in a lot of businesses. So I hope you guys think real long and hard before you vote this in on that. Not ninety thousand or ninety-nine when it's all said and done, or a hundred-thousand-dollar bond. That should be a four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar bond. Business is expensive, I know that. But if you guys are passing some of this stuff and it's already decided, you better think long and hard, and you better look at some recommendations, and you better start listening to some of these surveys that you do to try to cover your butt, but then you don't listen to them. Um, I looked back at some stuff tonight too. Mr. Fitzsim in two thousand nineteen approached me to try to drain his land into my land, or run through my land to go into the, uh, drainage ditch there. I commend him for trying to find things to do. What I don't commend is trying to use your position to fast-track things and get away with things that the rest of us in the private sector don't get away with or can't do. I appreciate business. That's great. I find it very strange that Mr. Carlson said that a year ago he started this, because my research shows that this was Leesok Township when they started it. So if he did his due diligence, like he says, and he wanted to bring this to the city and make the city all this money, then why did they petition Leesok Township? Because the stuff I went through shows that Leesok said, "No way. We're not doing it." Then they quickly tried to ram it into St. Cloud, or excuse me, Sartell, and get it in quick before a moratorium. That's abuse of power. That's abuse of position. There's gonna be some real long looks at what's going on here. Hopefully the rest of the community gets involved. But fast-tracking this stuff through the way it's happened is wrong. I don't care your relationship with each other at all. I don't care if you guys are all relatives. But guess what? I have a lot of disagreements with our former mayor, Mr. Persky, but he even went against his own mom. So whatever deals are getting done in backdoors and stuff, I hope that they're not. Water drainage is another, another thing. I'd really like to know if that's been addressed with this. But I'm sure that, you know, those panels will probably absorb that water, and it won't go to the wilds, as I was quoted in one of my texts from Mr. Fitzsim, the swampland. Because I'd hate for that land to go into more swampland, and then we have more problems. Except the only problem is, let's see, that development actually pays a lot of taxes and has for decades. Not one that's standing up here telling you how you're gonna get all this free money, even though I'm confused that it was never brought in when it was Sartell. It was brought in at Leesok. So I'm tired. I'm tired of looking at some of the stuff that's not correct, that's not truthful, that's not that. And like I said, if all of you wanna some, find out some of the things I've found, I don't think you're gonna like it. So I think that's enough said. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call for first time. Okay, second call for if you have additional information you'd like to talk.
Good evening. Peter Wilson again. Uh, I wasn't prepared to talk, so I wanted to mention a little more about what I said. Uh, what I was involved with was the cleanup of a site, one site, where there had been contaminants spilled from oil that had been re-refined. The term that's generally used is cradle-to-grave. So if this, these panels or runoff from the panels, or runoff from, I don't care, storage things or whatever it comes into, uh, cradle-to-grave, land, people, people involved, that's the deal. I've been involved with it. I mentioned the two-hundred-thousand dollars that was a scrap of paper. Nothing was written on it. You couldn't tell if that was money that was paid or paid out. But from that scrap was de- developed a consequence. They kinda said, "Well, we went there that often and picked this much up and represented this." It's a giant fabrication of, and it, and it could've been way low, it could've been way high. But whatever it was, it was a, a house of cards would be very gracious. And again, when I talked about two-hundred-thousand dollars, that's only one. There, you'd have to go online. I really didn't come here prepared to talk about this. I'm thinking there was a hundred or hundreds of these, 'cause one company sued another company, and on and on and on. And some of these things, again, going back in time, I was in, and I'm only bringing this up so that everyone understands what might happen. I have no idea if it will. But one of the companies I was involved insuring at the time...
I'm sorry. I have to interrupt you. Please stay on the topic of...
I was on the topic. Uh, solar, and again, I'm saying, once you get a pollution issue from this, if it gets into adjacent land, the concept of what it costs to clean it, and how much it will cost, and what will be determined of cost are indeterminable. They will be made up, amplified, and created. The other thing is to be able to generate all these, these panels and, and, and installations, the power has to somehow go somewhere, uh, which means some cow- underground lines or above-ground lines. Somehow this has gotta be transported in some manner. And as such, my concern becomes the second part of this, as you now see all the issues going on in Kimball and elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify, please step forward?
Nick Bromchankel again. Um, I just wanna bring up a point that us as landowners, other people here as landowners that are buddying up to this property, who obviously do not want this at either. So you have other properties that, that are right around it who do not want it. You guys are just going with the whole thing about a fence, and a guy had to bring in petitions about his fence right in town. This is a big project that's gonna affect everything for thirty-five years. So I hope you're taking... So I hope you're taking the property owners into consideration of this.
Thank you. Okay, last call on someone that would like to come up, please step forward and testify.
Uh, Evan Carlson, Enterprise Energy. Um, just kind of want to redirect on a few things. Uh, would it be possible to get that image off of the setbacks to other properties on the screen? Yes, that is why you should approve this site. That's why this is the best site in the city. Formerly in the township, annexed in for the purpose of pursuing this development. Because it's far away from the other users. I, I, I challenge you to find a better site, I couldn't. Um, that's why I approached this landowner and pursued this one. This is my development. I'm using my money to do it. I am the one with skin in the game, with, with money to lose. And as far as any personal, uh, uh, issues go between individuals, they have nothing to do with me. All right? I, I don't have anything to do with any backstory or, or personal back and forth between people that live in here. I want to be treated fair as, as a developer who has invested in a, a project in your community that will add value to your community and pay taxes in your community. In my opinion, you know, if I, if I were being treated the way I feel I should be, the pro, this project would have been approved on the, under the old ordinance, a long time ago. I understand that cities want to be careful. You were careful, you were very careful over the course of a, a very long time, it wasn't rushed through. A, a new ordinance was approved. And, and the reason that this, uh, site satisfies the new ordinance is because it's a good site and it always was. And going through that process of amending the ordinance and the fact that it still stands demonstrates that. And if you need any more explanation, look at that picture. Show me another, that's, that's the explanation for why this is a great site. Look at the setbacks. Um, if you're going to develop anything, um, you know, th-this is about as far a-as you can go. So there's that, th-then there's the, the issue of just, I don't want to get dragged into people's personal issues here and I've got nothing to do with them. I picked this site finger and square and it's a, it's a good site. Um, and I did in reliance on the old code, which we happen to survive the amendment, which is very fortunate. But only due to the careful selection of it in the first place. So there's no fast-tracking here, I don't know anything about any credit union, I don't know anything about that. I know I got my money into this thing and I want to get out with it done because I put the care into it that's needed, uh, to do it right and I've done, I've done that right. As far as, uh, decommissioning goes and a decommissioning security and equal treatment of like things, there is no decommissioning plan for building a home. There is no decommissioning plan for building an apartment. Solar gets the decommissioning plan because we decommission it, we remove it. And that land can be reused for some other purpose in the future. So that's why we're putting up that security because it can be removed and planned in part of your future land use plan. So as far as like performance bonding and things for construction, that's different than this long-term security for decommissioning. Um, you know, that, that's, that's the main points there is that it's, you know, it's a good site. Uh, the decommissioning is, is well addressed, proposed a generous amount, a hundred and twenty-five percent of that. And I'm looking forward to seeing what staff came up with that. Um, let's see here. Oh yeah, drainage. That was mentioned. So the area underneath the solar pan-panels, it is planted in this indigenous pollinator-friendly seed mix that doesn't come off, it stays there and we've got to mow it every now and then, uh, to keep the weeds down. But the point is that that seed mix will, uh, improve the permeability of the soil because it has deep roots, it's allowed to grow all, you know, all year round. So it, uh, improves the permeability of the soil as opposed to row crop. It will also slow down the velocity of water runoff because, you know, row crops have, you know, rows in between them. So water can push through it. Here, we're going to have the seed mix in there that's deep-rooted all year round. And, uh, if it rains, the entire permeable area underneath the solar panels is still permeable. But rather than being in a crop that's taken off, it's going to hit grass, which slows down water, its runoff and improves the quality of any surrounding, uh, water bodies. Which is why they often have these like buffers along creeks where they don't let you farm. They want you to, uh, have some sort of buffer like this, which is what we're putting in just because it matches well with the area. Um, let's see here. A-a-as far as, um, look, I know it's a personal thing because he told me it's a personal thing, so I won't beat around the bush, you know, the guy, there's some, there's something going on there, I don't have anything to do with it. It's a great site, should be approved on its merits because we've done a good job and it satisfies the ordinance. And a very rigorous process was applied to this and we have, we have met the bar. So that's why I'm asking to approve it to be fair and because it's a good site. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for anyone willing to testify, uh, in regards to this CUP and Enterprise Energy.
So if anyone has gone up by the solar panels north of Sartell, nothing grows under the solar panels. Nothing. It's all dead, it's all dead weeds. So I don't know, he's blowing smoke somewhere because nothing grows under them. No one has to cut lawn under them, no one, it's all dead. So I don't know if anything's going to grow under them if these thirty-five years later and he decides to get rid of these solar panels. Are you going to be able to grow something under there again? And for my grandpa's land that he's supposedly supposed to be buying, we've got city sewer running through there. Why would you invest money in solar panels when you think you'd make more money by? And I don't want to see houses back there, I want it to stay agriculture forever. I don't want things built, but I think it would be a dumb move. And he still hasn't said who benefits off the solar light? Who benefits off the power? I haven't gotten that answer yet. And you're destroying all the woods, he's going to have to take all those trees down to put solar panels up. I don't get that, don't you usually have to replace what you take down? I mean, usually wetland, if you can build a house in wetland, you have to replace the wetland that you destroyed if you're using, going to put something in it, just like in the wilds. That was all wetland, they all pump water out of their basements. Why they ever were allowed to build theirs beyond me. It's always been a water problem, the whole, my whole life I lived here. So just thought he hasn't emphasized where, who's benefiting off of this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Please step forward. We will now close the public hearing, um, and move into discussion with staff. Counsel, uh, we have before us, um, the CUP for this Enterprise Energy. Um, we're open for discussion and any questions for staff or discussion regarding this project.
Carrie, maybe you, I'm not sure if you know the answer to this and possibly Mr. Carlson would know otherwise. Um, let's say twenty years from now, if this isn't the case, but Enterprise Energy wouldn't be around, who does the decommissioning fall onto at that point? Is it just the property owner or who would it be?
They, we would follow our ordinance, which would establish, um, sending out a certified letter to them stating that you would have to decommission the site and follow the process of there. If that site was not decommissioned in the time stated, then the city would take on the decommissioning, hence needing the financial assurance to ensure that we can de, fully decommission and return it back to its predeveloped condition. And we did speak with our city attorney that it doesn't matter if the property owner retains that bond or letter of credit or financial assurance that is provided or if the developer does either way, that letter of credit stands and we have to be notified if they're unable to maintain it or keep it. Um, we have to get notified of that, so it doesn't matter who's holding that letter of credit. Um, that may be a question that you may have had, but our city attorney says it doesn't matter who actually holds that letter of credit.
And as one of our speakers mentioned, um, is it consistent with other developments in the city about the hundred and twenty-five percent of the decommission cost?
Correct, within our development agreements with subdivisions, um, Platts, any developments or within our pre-development agreements, we require a hundred and twenty-five percent of the required improvements for that development. Um, and with what they provided of the three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, a hundred and twenty-five percent of that would be four-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-four and eighty-eight cents would be a hundred and twenty-five percent of that. Um, and also it did not highlight any inflator amount for what that amount would be in thirty-five years um, with inflation and things like that, so that was not, um, accounted for either in what was offered.
And with other cities or counties in the area, um, they, from what you saw, usually follow their development agreements in their city or do they have exceptions for, uh, developments like this? Or what kind of information do you find on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go through a few of the surrounding, um, areas and ordinances similar to what we looked at when we were modeling our ordinance. Um, so for the Minnesota Model Ordinance, it states may require the posting of a bond letter of credit or the establishment of escrow account to ensure property commissioning. So very vague of what that requirement would be. Sartell, we require the applicant to provide a bond letter of credit, escrow or other financial security in the amount set by the city. St. Joe Township, in St. Joe, amount calculated using, in, in the escalator for the useful life of the facility and will cover the full cost of decommissioning form and amount set by the city. Stearns County, a cash escrow or letter of credit in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost to vegetate the project and a financial guarantee in an amount determined by the county board to ensure property commissioning. Big Lake may require the owner-operator to provide a current day decommissioning cost estimate and shall post a bond letter of credit or establish an escrow, including an escalator in a mount determined by the city council. Wade Park, not less than five-hundred thousand and higher may be deemed appropriate by the city. Wright County, based upon the estimate of the total cost to remove the infrastructure and reclaim, reclaim the property to its original condition, deposit shall be equal to a hundred and fifty percent of the estimate of all costs to remove and reclaim the property can re, can be reduced to not less than fifty percent of the estimate based upon the size of the project. So those are what we modeled our ordinance after and their decommissioning requirements.
Okay, um, I know there's more discussion to be had, but that's one change that I would like to see is the follow our one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent, that would be consistent. Um, it seems to be consistent with other, um, areas that you mentioned.
Understood, and we are going through our, all of our ordinances right now, so we can, um, note that within a change.
Yeah, on that decommissioning, my question is, is, um, those are developments, right? So they're not the same as solar. Do, we have examples of solar ordinance decommissioning? Or I wish, actually, the expert would have maybe given us more information as it relates to what do these things cost to decommission today? What's standard across, um, some of these developments? Um, they're obviously happening and we'll get more into some of that and some of my thoughts on some of this, uh, here in a little bit. But really on decommissioning, do we have examples of solar specifically?
Yeah, the, the applicant didn't provide the, all the costs that would be associated with removing the site or decommissioning the site or re-establishing it. Um, and then, so that, that price is included there and they also included some of the demolition removals and the salvage. That's why they offered a hundred thousand because they, um, equated the salvage amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand. So that is what we have to compare to because across the nation, not a lot of sites have reached their full decommissioning lifespan or their useful life of the solar panels. So it is still gray area and kind of uncharted territory, not even just the state, but the nation as well.
Carrie, the, what you, the ordinances that you just read off, those were solar specific, correct?
Yes.
Not specific to any other development, but those are solar specific.
Those are solar.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Jill?
Carrie, to clarify, um, before us tonight is a CUP and the ordinance requires an IUP, but the requirements are fully met per what would be required using a different vehicle or the IUP, correct?
Correct, yes, what was submitted was a conditional use permit because that was what was, um, in place at the time upon the submittal. However, we have changed it to an IUP and the only difference in that is, um, by definition, an end date or a sunset date for the interim use permit. So as a condition of this conditional use permit, we have established a sunset date or expiration date of thirty-five years. So that meets that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Jill?
We talked about timeframes when we were going through this ordinance and I think the question I had asked you at that time, do we have the ability through these, um, approval processes to look at different timeframes or make different conditions? Is that something we could choose to do tonight, even if it was the decommissioning of looking at that reevaluation and requiring things along the way, um, for appreciation, you know, inflation and some of the other things that are going to happen?
Yes, we, we can add those conditions within the conditional use permit. It's, this is basically, um, our give and take between the city and the developer of what, um, those conditions are and defining those.
On some of the natural barriers, um, those are required to be maintained consistently throughout, correct? And is there repercussions if they're not? Is, is that, would that be a full, coming back to the council saying, hey, they're not, they planted trees and they all died? Um, you know, and now you can see it from the neighbors and, and some of those things.
Yes, um, within the conditional use permit and the conditions defined, um, that the screening requirements shall be met to the satisfaction of the city with what was submitted here would be part of, um, part of an exhibit within this document. So if they're not maintaining those landscaping requirements as a condition of this permit, if they're not meeting those requirements, then we can revoke it and that would come to city council and planning commission to revoke the interim use permit or in this case, conditional use permit, which would then trigger, if that was approved, the actual decommissioning.
Carrie, we also heard some concerns related to water drainage. Can you speak to the, um, what you reviewed and what's included in the plan and how from a staff level, we feel like requirements are met?
So with what is required to be submitted for the conditional use permit is a site plan. We have not, um, completed our full site plan review for, um, engineering, fire, public works in that matter because, um, part of the condition is that they have to abide by a site plan approval and plating requirements. So if they wouldn't meet those requirements of meeting drainage, um, in stormwater, things in that nature, that they wouldn't be meeting that condition and they wouldn't be able to continue with their permit, if that makes sense.
So those reviews are yet to come.
They are yet to come. Um, that, that's pretty standard that we generally do the conditional use permit first so we're not wasting the developer's time and money pursuing other things if the permit is not approved at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just like to highlight that the planning commission did review and recommend approval of this conditional use permit contingent upon the council having the further discussion on the decommissioning plan, specifically the amount of financial bond being offered.
And I think that was discussed at moving that to one-twenty-five?
A hundred and twenty-five percent, which would be the four-hundred-and-fifty-eight, three-eighty-four and eighty-eight cents. What is a hundred and twenty-five percent of what was provided?
Okay. Any other discussion points?
I guess one other question, these are so new and obviously we went through a lot of these things. Um, do, are, in some of these other cities, are there solars going up? Obviously, have we done, do we have different requirements for the solars that have come up here from a decommissioning? Um, are we seeing some of these other cities have solar farms go up? I guess my concern with the decommissioning, I want to talk through that and we'll. I guess my concern with the decommissioning, I wanna talk through that and we'll probably do that here in a bit. But, you know, I struggle with solar, could personally, on how, what I believe of, from an energy perspective personally. But, you know, I really always looked at this as more of a, you know, we have an ordinance, we need a stronger ordinance and walking through this process. Because landowners are gonna develop their land for purposes that I may or may not agree with. But I also don't know that it makes a lot of sense for us to put something in place that could potentially prevent these from ever happening as well, then we wouldn't have needed an ordinance in the first place, I guess, is my my question. And maybe that's more of a discussion for us to go through. But have you seen in some of these other areas that have these ordinance, is it kinda killed the projects or do you have any context on that?
With the amounts, depending on where the what the city council or county board approves, it's hard to say that it has killed a project or not. However, as we all know, we see projects happening still and they're most people, as we went through, or not most people, most cities or counties do require some sort of decommissioning plan with a financial assurance. And we are still seeing these projects come to fruition. So I believe that there may be projects, depending on the developer, that can't attain what is required for that financial assurance. But obviously, they are still happening in in the surrounding area. So I I think that'd be a case by case and developer scenario.
Any other discussion points or questions for staff? With that, I would be looking for a motion on this permit for Enterprise Energy.
With an amount defined.
Oh, yeah.
Highlighting, I know you've discussed a hundred and twenty-five percent, but just please define that amount.
Yeah. I have a quick comment too before, and I'm gonna be frontal with it. I ran for this position to make this city better. I did it with my four kids. So if it's this topic or another topic, of people that think that there's some kinda side deal going on, I'm only speaking for myself, let's get real with this. And as we speak to, my kids are religion even. So let's get serious with the topic at hand. It's about the development of this city and what's right. Government can do so much between restricting businesses, helping citizens and doing overall what's best. So like I said, I just wanna be fully frontal, as I'm sure everyone else up here wants to be that. If it's this property or any other property that we discuss for any other topic, me, myself, I don't care if it's the mayor, I don't care if it's another council member up here, I don't care if it's my best friend. My goal up here is to do what's best for the city. And with that, I am going to make a motion to approve with the change of a hundred and twenty-five percent of the the decommission.
Look for a second.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for Enterprise Energy with a condition and a letter of credit bumping it up to a hundred and twenty-five percent for decommissioning for the total project cost prior to issuance. We now call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All those against? The motion passes four to one with the mayor abstaining due to personal interest in the property. Thank you. I gladly hand this meeting back over to the mayor who can finish it.
Counsel, next on our agenda is the department reports. First up is Public Works Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You have our report. Any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Public Works or Engineering? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Fire.
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you have monthly report for fire. Just wanted to shout out to our staff. October was extremely busy month with all the kindergarten tours, fire prevention month, open house, everything else. A lot of our firefighters took time off from their other jobs to make sure this stuff was successful, so I just wanna thank them for that.
Awesome. Counsel, any questions for fire? Thank you. Police?
Mayor, members of the council, I have my monthly report. I did wanna highlight, obviously, there's been a lot of talk around the flock camera safety system and we've had like three different incidents where we wished we would have had these cameras, including a pedestrian hit and run, which we could have had solved in minutes and confirmed that that vehicle actually passed through an intersection where one of these cameras would have been present. So we ultimately did solve that case, but could have done it much quicker with these cameras. So we're really excited to have them and hopefully we'll be able to show some early success. They are scheduled, we I just got an email today that they're scheduled for install, the majority of them by the last week in November. So we should have them installed and hopefully produce some results.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for police? I could attest to the one incident responded as a firefighter and chief was on scene and had that sidebar conversation with me. Had we had the flock cameras here, we'd know exactly who we're looking for right now, so. Excited to see them get installed. Community Development?
Mayor, members of council, you have my monthly report. Just an update, not as exciting as flock cameras or all that fun stuff. But we did, we are seeing the first stockpile removal out by Northern Metals, so they have obtained their necessary permits and are working towards removals. So that's a small win for us.
I did notice that the sand piles back spread along the bank of the pond and then they're digging out the rest of that. That's great.
Any questions for Community Development? Seeing none, thank you. City Council, commission updates?
No commission updates.
Anna?
One update.
Just kidding.
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, the applications do close on Friday, the seventeenth, I believe it is. We do have two applicants so far, so we are still hoping that we may get a few, so we have a pool to draw from.
Thank you. City Council, committee updates and miscellaneous business. Tim?
Well, I had something to say, but the person walked out of the room just now. But I, in our packet, there was a retirement letter and and for John and and sad to see it. Can you hear me, John? Sad to see it. Big shoes to fill and I wish us luck in finding someone to to take over the reins of our public works. It's gonna be a a fun ride. So thank you for, and Officer Shelby that retired, that's another wonderful person that's gonna be leaving our service. Thanks.
Jill?
Nothing tonight.
Alex?
Yeah, I was just gonna give a quick shout out to Planning Commission. A lot of things they have today, stockpiles, fences, solar, they've done a lot for us. And we take their opinion seriously and to City Council and Planning Commission have different duties. So they help us, guide us, no matter what our decision is. Same with staff, same with everyone in council, we've had a lot of discussions about all the topics, so kudos to all.
Jed?
I would just echo the two retirements that we had, just thanks for the service to Officer Shelby, I believe. I didn't have my notes here. And then John, obviously, a lot of years of service. Tim had a rookie night tonight as mayor and forgot to ask for more discussion after a first and a second. So I guess what I would have said is, but Alex kinda said it as well, I would never have a personal interaction with that and and my belief, personal belief on solar is probably not in line with a project like that. But I always looked at it as a development project.
And I have nothing further. I would look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.